It is 3:05, May 3rd, 2016. And I call to order this special meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Air Force Authority, Access to Agency to the Victorville Development Agency, the Victorville Joint Power, Science, and Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have a little call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember McGeekren. Councilmember Mabredi.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox. Mayor Garcia.
Here.
And we will rise for the A Pledge of Allegiance, and I can meet our Chief, let me show you.
Please place the flag, place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic where all its stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item on the agenda today, this afternoon, and that's the Pre-Budget Workshop, establishing the annual budget for the fiscal year 2016, 2017. Madam Chair, can you raise your recommendation?
There is no recommendation at this time, Mayor Garcia. The city manager will probably open this item.
Yeah, just very quickly, we're doing things a little bit differently this year, as you know. We had several requests from councilmembers wanting to be more involved during the budget process rather than simply at the very end of the budget process. So we've brought it to the council probably two to four weeks earlier than normal, as well as similarly, earlier than normal, as in it doesn't balance yet. Just to give you a little bit of history, I know that Mr. Cox knows this all too well. I suspect most of you know at least a portion of it, but typically we start our budgets really thinking about them in February or so, really start to gather materials in March, and then we spend second half of March and all of April tweaking, cutting, and massaging the budget to get it to balance by sometime in May, and then ultimately bringing it to council typically late May, early June for input, and then typically at the end of the year or thereabouts. The budgets over the last, at least as long as I've been here, typically have come in a good 20 percent over in that first round. Departments are very rightfully looking out for their interests and services they provide to the residents of Victorville, so they are looking to expand those services to our residents as we begin our round, first round of budgeting, and it's management's require or need, working with the department heads, to pare those things down to fit the revenues that we believe we're going to see in the coming fiscal year. So I would say that we're probably about 80 to 90 percent of the way through that process, and we are actually happy that council wants to have some input at this point. That's what today is about, is about taking a look at where we are and getting your input on a little bit more trimming that needs to be done, as well as educating you on everything that's in the budget document as it currently sits as a draft. So with that, I'll turn it over to John Magillo, the Finance Manager, who has spearheaded our budget defenses here.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Again, my name is John Magillo, among your Finance Managers. I want to welcome you guys to the Pre-Budget Workshop today. I want to do some quick introductions. As you know, Bill Webb, our Assistant City Manager, in charge of all the finance and all the admin services, community services. Pat Rosenberg, our Finance Manager. Josie Trevino, our Personnel Officer. Attorney General is Janelle Davidson, Assistant to the City Manager. Attorney General is Brandon Keel, our IT Manager. So I know Doug explained to you why we're here, and I was going to give you a quick overview of that budget process. But what I'll do is I'll go over what the agenda is going to encompass. I will give the quick overview of where we at, or at in the budget process, and then Pat will come up and give you a budget summary of citywide funds, the overview, along with the general fund, revenues and expenditures, and the fund balances. And then we'll turn it over to the department heads, the staff behind me. They'll go over their department reviews, one at a time, hopefully very quickly, within changes. And along the way, you can answer or ask questions, and he'll be able to answer. And during these presentations, we have the option to go to Open Gov, which has our current fiscal data online, along with any historical data. So at any time, if you want to interrupt and go into that, we can. And then I'll bring it back to Pat to do the inter fund loans, and then I'll come back up and we'll ask for direction as we can finalize this budget going forward. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and do a quick overview. I know each of you have gotten this from Bill, Assistant City Manager. So some of the things that we wanted to highlight in the budget, in the budget process that we go through, is that the SEC costs have taken a big toll on our reserves, both with the city reserves and the general fund at $5 million, and the SCLA reserves at $10 million. So with that restriction, we're currently estimating the general fund at $2 million for the next budget year, which will be kind of holding contingency for any future SEC litigation costs going forward. Also, the general fund property and sales taxes, they continue to rise to slightly, but without that triple flip this year from the last year, total revenues will remain flat at $56 million. The general fund expenses have continued to rise and have exceeded our revenues by $1.1 million, and especially it includes the unexpected transition sheltering costs of $376,000 from the Apple Valley Animal Shelter, and also with the recent water rate increase, which puts a burden on the city parks an additional 300 percent. So in summary, like Doug had mentioned, we have spent the last several weeks going through numerous cuts with department heads, and they've all come to the table, both general fund and non-general fund, and we will continue to cut accordingly. We wanted to get your direct involvement in the financial line and regular request, so we can see if we can finalize this budget going forward. Okay? So with that being said, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Pat, she'll give you the budget.
As you can see in the back, or in front of you, this is the operating budget overview of all funds. The revenue is projected at $180.5 million. The largest revenue received is our charge for services at 43 percent. Revenue such as tax and other revenue make up most of the remaining balance. As for the expenditure, it's projected at $211.8 million. That also includes the capital of roughly $33.3 million. So really, the overall operating expenditure is at $178.4. Operation and maintenance are projected at almost 50 percent of the expenditure.
Pat, is it accurate to say that none of that capital spending will be taken from this pot of revenues? It all comes from reserves?
Some of them will come from reserves, some of them will come from the revenue, because it's right now, you take the regular operating expenditure is at $178.4. So the difference between $211 and that is total.
Yeah, what I'm trying to, if we're going to cover the capital expenditure out of reserves, then it looks to me like revenues actually are slightly more than operating expenditure.
That's correct.
Which is a good thing.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's including all funds, general funds, enterprise. Next slide, expenditure by fund type.
Can I please stop you for just a second? You'd mentioned reserves, just for the public in the audience. Just to clarify, a lot of our capital funds, they come in over a number of, we save them up until we have everything collected. It's not as if we're taking reserves that would otherwise be used for operating expenses. These are all separate funds that are collected specifically for these capital items. We don't want that to be misunderstood.
And we have some reserves that can't be used for capital items, they have to be retained for future development, et cetera, et cetera. But we have capital reserves sufficient to cover these expenditures.
Yes, yes.
That probably will answer you on this slide, matter of fact, because the expenditure by fund type, as you can see, majority of them are enterprise funds, which make up close to $101 million, 40 percent of all the expenditure for the whole city. What comprise of enterprise fund are water, air force, stuff, sanitary, solid waste, municipal utilities, and that make up $101 million. The remaining balance is basically in general fund, capital, agency, and special revenue. Next slide, capital improvement plan, projected at $33.3 million, an increase of $6 million for over fiscal year 2016. Increase commerced to various street improvements, and you can find a detail of all the time in the budget.
Excuse me. On the first slide, we got expenditures of $211.8 million, on the next one, we have expenditures by fund type of $180.5. Why wouldn't it be the same number?
Is that based on the revenue portion or what is it?
I'm looking at expenditures on the right-hand column and expenditures by fund type. I would think that would be the same number.
I don't think the second chart includes those capital funds that were held in reserve for these projects. I think it's just based on the actual revenues or anything.
No, but you got.
That was probably a typo on my part. It was a typo on my part.
Oh, okay.
But that's up to.
Yes, obviously a typo. You can eyeball those numbers, you see there, it should be $211. Okay, that's good.
Very well done.
That's all right.
Next slide, the top general fund revenue, projected probably tax revenue to be at 5 percent within 2016, at $16.5 million. Sales tax projected to go down due to the end of the triple flip reimbursement at the end of 2016. Sales tax for 2017 projected at a regular 1 percent will be approximately at $216 million. Revenue continue to increase from year to year, however, our expenditure continues to rise faster.
Question on the TOT, why are we looking at a decrease? Yeah, considering that we've been collecting and collecting on a good basis, is it because we've been collecting so much because it hasn't been paid in previous years? So it's not going to be last because it's not.
That's exactly.
That's what I figured out the reason was, I just wanted to make sure.
So do we have a receivable number for, you know, that's the last one? Or does it? Well?
Or for previous years?
You have a lien or something, though.
Yes, that's the reason why that was projected higher in 2016, because of the lien term. Since the auditor, we hired the auditor generally tried to make it more actual to what it should be, not basing on the lien.
Does this include our new hotel owns to the city's?
I don't believe so. I don't think it's going to be constructed in time. At least it hasn't been included in budget, so that's happened, and it would be additional.
So it would come in at the end of the year, or if you're lucky, it probably is the next of the year.
Yeah, one of the things we struggled with, in fact, it happened in 2016, was the Holiday Inn was just reopening, rebranded, everything, different marketing efforts than the Ambassador did. It's tough to try to determine how much new TOT we might have. Is that going to attract new travelers, or is that going to move travelers from one hotel to another? And so how does that impact the C O C? C O C, when you have, is always a bit of a mystery until we get a year behind us with beginning new hotel.
Well, if nothing else, this number is very conservative.
Yes.
Isn't that, by the way, isn't that the number that John Hugheson was insisting was going to go down, sales tax? The presentation he did not long ago, do you remember that, John?
It's the same.
I remember the presentation, but.
No, I thought he was saying that sales tax was down, everything was doomsday.
Yeah, that was, he was comparing it to a 10-year high from 2008, I believe.
Now, what happens if you go back and look at the presentation? There was a peak, then it dropped substantially, and then it continued to grow. And it's been on an upward trend for four years, probably five or six.
I would imagine about six.
If you go back and use the peak, and depending on where you start, you can say, "Sales tax really down."
Yeah.
But that was anomaly, it was so high. And so if you go back and average it, it's actually going up each year.
And that, along with the fact that we've capped our sales tax at the mall, based on that, so we're seeing some sales tax increasing overall, even though the mall is doing a lot better, we're capped because of our agreement with Mace, which are the developer.
That's true.
So that's good.
Off the top of my head, it's probably about 5 percent of your total sales tax comes from the mall.
Yeah, that's good.
Isn't that also capped over the amount, so what goes over it, sort of like this, on a annual basis?
Capped at a million dollars or something.
I don't remember the math.
A million dollars comes to the city, anything over that goes to the mall to repay when the insurance that they put in. It gets a little bit lost, and had to do a good job of explaining it, but sales tax continues to grow. Sales continue to grow this fiscal year. Back in 2007, the state put in place the triple flip, then swapped property tax for sales tax and vice versa, and it ultimately equaled the same amount, in theory, but it delayed everything by a quarter. So for 2016, we actually had one extra quarter of a quarter of sales tax that is not going to be present in 2017 because the triple flip has completely gone away. So as a result, the total number goes down, but it's simply because of that triple flip going away. It effectively caught up from one quarter of a quarter that we missed back in 2008. Probably more confusing than it needed to be, it's the best I can do.
Last slide, general fund expenditure by department. Public safety at 37.866 percent. Community service includes parks, recreation facility, and animal control projected at And of course, the good portion of the general, that's 350, about 57,000, 350,000 will budget to pay back to the mall for a year.
Question. Which departments positions are included in the public safety category?
Police and fire.
That's it?
So we're looking at about a million dollar deficit in the general fund, plus or minus?
Yes, as we said, right.
Do we expect to balance that before we're done?
We absolutely will.
We will balance it, whether we can achieve that, maybe another question.
We always have.
Legal fees next year?
That's actually included in the very first departmental presentation. I don't know, is that where we're heading, yes, or not? Okay, all right.
Very good.
Good segue, Mr. Kennedy.
You're welcome.
So, John, go ahead. We'll go ahead and get it, turn it over to the department heads. As you can see on your agenda, it's going to go, you know, just like it is on the panel there, so it's going to start from the first, for this year. Okay, I'll stay seated here if you don't mind, rather than going up to the podium. I don't have to do that anymore, I can sit at the table. So I don't know, I thought perhaps staff would put this in alphabetical order, but it didn't quite work out that way. Maybe it's smallest to largest budget, exciting, or least exciting budget, to start off with first. So we kind of cobbled together what we call the administration budget. It consists of the city clerk, city council, city manager, city attorney, and risk manager in your sort of one sheet here. City attorney and risk manager are combined with city manager summary, and we actually treat those separately, but just for presentation purposes right here, those are combined. There are essentially no changes to these budgets, with the exception of a couple of things, namely, for the city clerk's office, every other year, the budget goes up and then comes back down because of the elections, the election costs that come in in even numbered years. So this year, that line item is up, basically doubled or just over doubled for operations. And then next year, that'll be cut in half again.
What page are you on, Doug?
I am on page 14, under tab Administration. So essentially, we, every year, we have a big increase, and then a reduction, and then increase, and a reduction. So that's simply a product of the election costs on a biannual basis. Included in operations and maintenance are the city manager, let's talk about the city attorney quickly. Yes, sir?
You said the city clerk will double, and I noticed it. The size budget 35 fiscal year said you would sell it out, but that's not operation maintenance, isn't it?
Correct. That's, I was just reading that, the operations accounts, if you will, the amount that we got to save for.
Not personnel, not salaries, anything, this is just strictly the.
Yeah, yeah, the personnel budget increases by about 5 percent. Overall, I think our personnel budget across the board are up 3, 4 percent, depending on where people are in their tenure with the city. So next year, we can expect probably a $40,000 or so drop to that line item, because we won't have an election.
Yeah, but we might.
No.
I thought we had to go to the public to change the charter.
That has to be this, on a general election cycle, so that would have to either be in 2016 or 2018. We cannot take that, because the charter, the charter change has to occur on a general election cycle, can't have a special election. Right now, we're anticipating having that charter question on the 2016 ballot, although that's something that still has to come back to the council, obviously, for a final determination. Okay, moving down past the less than exciting numbers in front of you, these little tiny numbers compared to the rest of the budget, including in operations and maintenance for the city manager, is the city attorney's budget. We are budgeting a, our standard amount of about a half a million dollars for city attorney services. Generally speaking, departments also have budgets for attorney services as well. We are budgeting a small amount for the SEC cost, just the ongoing sort of monthly cost of maintaining documents and whatnot, because we don't know if or when the SEC case will go to trial. This budget, as of right now, assumes it will not go to trial, either because it won't happen next fiscal year, or it won't happen at all. We still have a strong desire and a relatively strong belief that we will win at motion for summary judgment. Once we get some word from the judge, once the judge makes a determination on that, then we will come back to the council with any updated amounts, if we in fact have to go to trial on a piece or pieces of that, or if we don't have to go to trial but could potentially face an appeal from the SEC to the judge. So at this point, we're assuming no trial. I think there's a greater likelihood of that happening. If we were to assume a trial, I wouldn't hazard a guess as to how much we would budget for it, so it seems premature to even attempt to do that at this point. The other, only other real changes to the budget are in personnel and city manager. No new personnel, however, we do have the full cost of a full year of the public information officer that was added probably through the year last year, and then as the Assistant to the City Manager transitions, splitting per time between utilities and the City Manager, some of those, some of that percentage is coming over to the City Manager's Department, whereas it used to be a 90-10 split, this budget contemplates a 50-50 split, and most likely, next year, that would go away altogether. That's it, there's not a whole lot there. We haven't made any, any increases anywhere, no new training or conferences or anything along that, just the same things that we do each year. So if you have any additional questions, we can move on to perhaps talking more aside.
This is so trivial, we almost, man, it's embarrassing to even ask, but why is the, why is the operation and maintenance for the city council increasing? Personnel is decreasing, which I'm happy to see, but.
The operations and maintenance for the city council, such a small amount, hang on.
Well, just give me a ballpark.
It's the ranger, you got it.
Okay, yeah. Supplies and water.
You mean I should stop drinking bottled water?
No, no, the bottles are fine. Actually, the water usage for city hall, as well as the utilities of city hall, electric, gas, whatever, is split, it's a portion based on square footage, based on square footage.
And you're blaming the council for that?
I blame everybody for that, that's just very small piece of.
Let's move on, I'm kidding.
Yeah, we can't talk about every little $5,000 increase unless we want to be here before, until June 30th. We'll have some meals brought. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to Bill for administrative services.
This is also fairly brief. One thing I want to know, part, part of the reasoning when you order, they order, you already called out the semi alphabetical, I believe it starts out with primarily general fund departments first, so it does make some sense from a fund standpoint. So up until we get to and pass public works, those departments all make up much of the general fund. And so I'm just here to present administrative services. This department includes finance, human resources, and technology. And as you can see on the first page after the tab, the total operating budget is increasing 2 percent department-wide, or 3 percent, I'm sorry, department-wide. And what we've done is we've shifted what we could, where we could, that was reasonable and legal to other funds, as far as new projects and technology, things of that sort. We have added no staff, no vehicles, no new major programs, and for the second budget year and going on the third, probably calendar year, we've also not funded the vacant CFO position. And again, we would like to, and I know the council would like to. However, at this time, not only are we limited by funds, but we also have the SEC investigation ongoing. If both of those things change at any time during any fiscal year coming up, we'd love to bring back to council to then fund and recruit for a CFO. But at this time, that's not even on the books, so there are no new additions to this department. If there's any questions, we'll go to community services.
Bill, real quick, just on this page, and I think this will go for all the following tabs, so these are from my perspective, one of the things that just always jumps out to me is percentages, if they go above 20 or below 20. You know, so I'm looking at, you know, finance, it's negative 100 percent, I don't know that I'm so much concerned about that, but under human resources, operations and maintenance is 51 percent higher, and then information services goes up 10 percent.
And now, the human resources, I can speak to briefly, first of all, that division, that's why the entire department is like at 30 percent, but if you look at the top, there also human resources is up 6 percent, while others are down lower, so we kind of spread it around. There's two things that probably go into that situation, but the most important is there's only five staff in human resources. Any addition puts it way out, and it's all 100 percent personnel. So one thing, one thing that we're including in this year and proposing is the service award programs for employees, which was, which was eliminated with the recession. And what that includes is a total cost of that and spread amongst all, this is spread amongst all funds equally, or proportionate to the employees. Basically, every employee at this point, because we passed so many years, deserves a recognition and a service award for either five. a recognition in a, in a service award for either five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five years. And that's what it includes. It's, it's not a big expenditure, but it adds up when you have three hundred employees coming forward to be recognized. So that's, that's what that is.
I'm Christian Gendert with community services. Under community services, we have animal control, facilities, library services, parks, recreation, golf, solid waste, recycling, landfill mitigation, and water conservation. We obviously have some large members in animal control today, but we are overall down three percent as a department on this budget.
What happened with animal control? Did we add people?
No, we've not added people. We do have taken one existing person and moving them into an officer position from a dispatcher position. However, a big number there is from changing our sheltering, going from BBAPL, Vicar Valley Animal Protective League, to Apple Valley Animal Services.
Yeah, the contract is still in negotiations. It will come back to the council, I believe, at the next meeting.
Why is it doubling?
The sheltering contract itself, or?
Well, that, yeah, that line item, but I imagine it includes other things besides just the sheltering contract, but-
Actually, the majority of it is the sheltering contract.
And I'd just like to know why that cost is going up that high.
There aren't a lot of choices in terms of sheltering services in this region, going, and we checked all the way down to DeBoer. There really wasn't anyone else who had capacity, no one else who had services available for us to shelter the animals and take care of them. We had one company that we were doing business with, BBAPL. They're essentially told us, we're not going to do business anymore in the sheltering business. We're going to basically be a, a no-till shelter.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not objecting to, I'm just trying to figure out, is it that much better a service, that much better a facility than what VPAPL has?
It's a better facility. It's probably better service. It is most definitely more expensive. I haven't firsthand witnessed the services at BBAPL, but just the facilities themselves are night and day difference.
Does this also include some of the costs they want us to provide to expand their facility to handle our capacity?
That is correct. Yeah, yeah, there will be a, a piece component to that that way they will use to do an expansion, yes.
Which makes sense to me, because if we had to build it ourselves, we couldn't do it for anyone close to that.
No, our cost, we've looked at our cost if we were to build a shelter in there, easily, probably three or four times the amount.
Okay. Christian, what? The reason for the drop in the golf?
We had a number of things that we were correcting after the previous minute company was operating it, and those weren't last year's budget. This year's budget doesn't have those expenses. In addition, Sierra Gulf Management has reduced some of the costs.
Also did irrigation?
Oh, irrigation, excuse me, that was another thing. There was a two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollar a year payment for an irrigation system that I believe was put in in nineteen ninety, and it was paid off.
Wonderful. You're doing a great job.
Yeah, they have, they really have. I don't know if a lot of people realize, one of the ways they've saved twenty-five percent is that they've let the front, from the front of the tee box to maybe a hundred yards out, they've allowed that to return to desert, which, if you hit it there, you deserve to be in the desert.
That's why I don't golf there.
But otherwise, the parrows and greens are just, they've just done a beautiful job.
They've done excellent.
Compared to what we got from Billy Casper, and less money. It's just, we couldn't have gotten anything better.
About a fifty percent chance of hitting it there and fifty percent chance of hitting it, Lord knows where.
You must be talking about yourself, Dave.
Not myself, yeah.
Talking about me.
No longer.
I don't know, why do you ever say that about the rest of us?
I'm a past golfer, I no longer am a golfer.
The only thing I'd say about animal control, and I know, you know, this is obviously, we need to do what we're, what we're looking to do, but I think long-term, the council needs to look at the potential or the possibility of building our own facility. I mean, I just, I'm, I like the ability to contract and do business with Apple Valley and, and have our animals taken out there, but that's not very convenient for our residents or constituents, and I think we've got to figure out a way in future years to, you know, to look at building our facility. But I say that behind what you're going to talk about next, and that's our library, so.
Isn't it actually closer to Victorville than VPAPL?
It is, just by about a mile.
Yeah, it's slightly, so even that makes it a little bit-
Under just a sheltering contract additionally, we will continue to maintain our facility here. We can provide customer service. Obviously, if you have an animal picked up, you would most likely have to drive to Apple Valley to get it, but all other services would be provided here.
We're moving down the list. Facilities is next. There's seven percent increase there. There's mostly sanctuary-related projects that are associated with that, that increase, and water is a small portion of that as well. Library services, that is one, I believe it is a parking lot resurfacing property for the facility.
Where is that? No, but what line? Maintenance?
It should be under O and L.
We are researching, possibly trying to take over Circle Drive. Wouldn't be included in the library budget, it would be street project, but how the multiple members of the council have talked about the desire to just get that done. What that looks like, we don't quite know yet, and we're trying to figure it out because it doesn't meet city standards, but it doesn't make it impossible. It makes it difficult, or we can deal with it difficult.
Well, we've had repeated requests from library volunteers, folks that work there for, gosh, you name it, books, updating facilities, computers. We have enough, we have no place to go to find some money to help improve that library.
Actually, done quite a bit of that. We've upgraded the, the lighting, we've upgraded landscaping-
Just not enough.
-upgraded the computers with the help of the friends of the library.
Over the last four years, we've done one major project a year through CDDG funding, actually. Roof repairs, HVAC upgrades, parking lot structure, as well as apartment lighting, I believe.
Right.
The roof was redone, correct. So all those things were done over the last several years. It's never going to be a beautiful palace, but it's a wonderful place to go. And we have about seven hundred people a day show up on average.
And there is interest, I know on the part of the council as well as the public, to build a larger central-type library, possibly here in the civic center. I know we have some land across the street. That is a function of development impact fees, as development comes in, that eventually gets funded. But we have to see some development before that. There's really no other funding source that we're aware of to build a facility of that size.
How much of that activity in the library is a function of where it's located? In other words, is it, is it really used heavily by the people who live nearby?
It is used heavily by the local neighborhood, but it, we also get visitors from Apple Valley frequently, not because Apple Valley's having trouble with its own library, but because, frankly, we have better service. And could be proud poppy here, we do a better job, and it's directly proportional to the effort that Karen puts into all the things she does at the library. We have excellent programming, we have things for kids, it's a non-stop place.
Part of our development, the police library, now, back when we were discussing growth development of lots, someone said we have about fifteen thousand lots under proof. To prove, there was quite a lot of proofs to get started. Development fees have not been paid on.
That is correct. Development fees are paid just before certificate of occupancy. That was something that the building industry asked us to do, I want to say six years ago, five years ago, on a temporary basis to try to spur development. And we looked at it with the senior staff and department heads and determined that it was probably appropriate, and proposed it to the city council and approved it, to make that a permanent decision rather than a temporary. What's reality is, those impacts to our library, to our roads, to our parks don't occur until there's a family living in that home. So why charge the fees before there's a family living in that home? So if those fees get charged, really just before the business is opened or the family moves into that home. It's created a few public relations issues for us, as people sometimes get surprised by those because they've forgotten that that's something that gets paid at the end of the project rather than at the beginning of the project. But that came very specifically from, on a request from the building industry.
Agreed.
Okay.
Next one is parks position. Well, someone else has more questions on the library. Parks, our operations and maintenance is up. That's due to a new mower that needed to be replaced for MGA QMD requirements, and about eight percent of this cost is directly related to water, new water going up, per every meter cost going up, hundreds of dollars.
Some of those large meters that we talked about for that water rate increase were for the city.
About sixty percent.
And our old-
They all fall to zero.
And our, our old rates had a, a public benefit type of rate for parks, and part of the, the capital spend lawsuit wiped that opportunity out, and no longer have a public benefit rate. Everyone pays the same amount for every drop of water that they use.
I mentioned to staff about not the two or six of them, but I thought back on the adjudicated water rights, the pumping for the golf course, parks, putting in, literally receiving a water, adjudicated water right, we, we, we owe it to them that you want to extend for the months of the golf course.
There are actually, we do have three water rights on the three wells of the course. Two of them are going to be re-adjudicated, and that actually is going to be-
That's part of the savings to the golf course, does that affect the, the cost to the parks?
Yep.
One of the things that's on our agenda tonight is a demonstration garden in the Center City, Center Street Park. Which sort of begs the question, are there sections of our parks that should be landscaped differently that every square foot of the park, does it need grass?
Actually, we've gone through the parks in the last eight months and actually shut water off in lots of areas where we did not need grass. The playing fields are green, we're doing our best, even though they're heavily, heavily used, we're doing our best to keep them playable and usable. But other areas, we have plans for doing desertscape where we can and taking out grass where we don't really need it.
Yeah, all the rough areas on a golf course are basically dirt and have to desert, which makes sense. We got to do all that we can.
Well, I hope in the parks that we shut the water off because you don't need grass and there's trees there, I hope they save the trees.
Yes.
That requires a separate system or a sprinkling system, or your hard employee with a bucket, and somehow those trees that they have to be-
Hard employee with buckets, but we are definitely saving the trees down.
But I need to see the trees gone.
Yeah.
Next is recreation. That's down, overall about four percent.
What, what have we cut?
Everything we can.
Everything we can, absolutely.
Remember, as, as I stated in the beginning, starting out, uh, other examples, we have one full-time employee at the library. We, we universally across all, all the departments here, we added staff that was necessary to catch up to the last five to eight years since, since staff were cut and resumed minimum for, for improved service, you know, a little bit. But we were approximately, only with what we felt was health and wasn't an exorbitant, you know, ridiculous, I just a wish list, we were still seven million upside down. So we've spent three weeks cutting, cutting, and that's just the general fund. And as was stated, other departments also helped out by sharing costs and assuming some things, and then we assume some of that work. So we're transferring and trying to do what we can, and do everything we can by the deadline to get down to one million. But everything has been cut, and this is another department, you know, again, that has no new personnel, no jobs, you know, no new programs in it. So in addition to nothing additional, we just have to cut, you know, the cost of just, just the standard increases and expenses across the board to get to some of these negatives in some divisions and make it up in some others. But that's across the board from what you'll, you'll be hearing from us tonight. So like you said, we're eighty to ninety percent through. The good news is we're not done. This is a pre-budget workshop. The bad news is we've taken a lot of wax already, and there's, there's not a, a lot of meat left on the bones. So for that, I guess, or anything. So that'll be, you know, that'll be the discussion tonight, hopefully with some direction and some, some continued effort. Of course, we will come back finally, but this isn't one of those, you know, we want wish lists. I just want to make that clear, all these people have strived really hard, you can see by the numbers. You're used to it, you know, you've seen these before, and so that's what it is.
Well, I'm just looking, you know, Christian, to help you out here on page eighteen, every division there is down.
Yes, sir.
Thirty-three percent of council member already brought up in golf, which is a huge victory. It shows us we made the right decision. Down to eighty percent solid waste and water conservation, down sixteen percent, which is funny to me because we're spending so much money and effort to conserve water, but yeah, we're down there.
Yeah, and if you'll notice, our operations and maintenance on the water conservation is up twenty-four percent, and the reason is exactly that, we're in valour, it's way down.
Back to recreation, Christian, this looks like it's a cut from 2016, but 2016 operations and maintenance was a huge increase over fourteen, fifteen. What was that all about? Maybe we aren't really cutting, maybe we're-
Well, some years we had, last year we had roofs, I don't know if that was involved in it, we had a lot of delayed roof repairs. We wanted new roofs on buildings. Again, I don't know if it's in that category, Christian, but I remember that was a big chunk of his, of his, of his cost last year. We opted to do the cheaper, quicker, which was repair, but in the long run, it will catch up to us a few years in cost, this more, because we still need to, to replace those roofs.
He's exactly right.
But this isn't, we're not cutting programs, the kids are involved.
No, there have been, no, there have-
We, we had one tiny classroom that closed because a teacher left, and we decided not to reopen. That's the only-
But that's, yeah, nothing for cost reasons, how we've closed anything, we've also just not expanded anything.
So we are maintaining the same program?
Yes.
And trying to maintain smiles at the same time.
In the, in the record park, there was a time when we collected, the city collected the tax because there was a district prior, it was insufficient, the support came from the general fund. All those taxes have been consolidated into general tax. I don't think there's any way to tell anymore with the taxes come down. But in many of the older districts, they didn't, they closed the whole city. I don't remember the sanitary district, but half the city had a tax. Record Park had a totally different boundary. When they dissolved the tax, did they reconcile all the boundaries to make it a full control of the municipal pockets?
The boundaries dissolved, so it's just the municipal boundary. The sanitary district, nothing has changed there. The record park district, the only change that really we had to adopt as part of that dissolution was that even though the county pockets, meaning Spring Valley Lake, Mountain View Acres, were not within the city's incorporated boundary, because a portion of their taxes were included in that record park tax, we offer services to those county areas at the same cost as services to city residents.
Well, it makes sense, but I, I know when we started the street lighting district, city law, that is, that was a substantial. I didn't know if that same procedure had gone through for record park acceleration.
No, and it's because the street lighting district is a different type of district that was formed up under different law. And I'm trying to remember, it was the nineteen thirty-three or nineteen thirteen-
Eleven.
I don't remember what the name of it is, but it was- I don't remember what the name of it is, but it was, it was formed in a completely different manner, had completely different rules.
The taxes that we, we, the city not collect, the property tax, you want to say that the county collects and is right for the city?
It is. It didn't always used to be. Actually, we had the districts, the other three districts that we had, fire, park and rent, and sanitary. Each one of them had a different boundary, as you said. So there was 220-some tax rate areas that each one had a different mix, whether you were in the sanitary district or out of it, whether you were in the Victorville College District A for bonds or not. And so there was literally 220-some different taxing rates. What the county would do, right or wrong, I have my own opinion on that, is they would collect all those taxes and have a somewhat manual process that would collect them and then reallocate them to pay to the city based on an overall amount that then made it look as if each parcel paid the exact same across the board. My opinion, it was overly complicated. I don't, I'm still, to say, don't understand why they did it or continue to do it at this point. But so effectively, what the county does is they take the average across the city and they, that's how they report it, even though that's not really how it's paid.
Question on solid waste.
Yes.
Solid waste recycling landfill mitigation. This is not trash pickup?
Yes, sir.
We pay fees for trash pickup. Are those costs covered by revenues? And I was looking at general fund revenues and I don't-
Solid waste isn't part of the general fund, that's why.
Oh, oh, oh.
Separate fund, yeah, it's a separate enterprise fund.
Enterprise funds.
This is the one area that Community Services has that's not general fund.
Is an enterprise fund. But your other areas are not. They're all general funds.
Well, office and enterprise fund, water conservation is a portion of the water enterprise fund.
Why do we do it that way?
This is the department that I set up. The golf has always been part of Community Services, but water conservation and animal control, I added to Community Services in probably 2012 or something, I would imagine. And the reason being is that those divisions have a public outreach. So my thought, and it's come to fruition, at least mostly, I'll say, is that let's say someone is going to a school to teach them about solid waste, about recycling. At the same time, that person or a colleague can also talk about water conservation and do that outreach type of services. What it did was it made the water district proper, simply an operations and maintenance division or department or district, actually, in this case. So tried to split off those heavy PR pieces and put them all in one place, partially because they tend to have more creative types that are in those positions. And I thought getting them together would create some synergy with marketing, with outreach and those sorts of efforts. So it hasn't been everything I hoped it would be, but it's, we're certainly on the way that way.
It's still happening.
Yeah. Are there any other questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. Chris Orchard, Director of Development. Development consists of 28 employees in the divisions of building, planning, code enforcement, and business licenses. We did our best to cut wherever we could, as Bill was saying. We have added a position, we're working with water, we're working with Brian Gengler and Doug Matthews. We're adding a code enforcement officer. If you heard about the state water audit, that was done relating to fats, oils, and greases or the fog, the grease trap program. The, they said that the city wasn't doing enough because that kind of falls to the lower priority of code enforcement when we've got all these other things going on in the city. So Brian's going to fund a code enforcement officer position so that we can ensure that that is being taken care of as much as it needs to be. So that's not a general fund thing, but development will pay for the hard costs, the operating expenses for that officer, but the salary and everything will be paid for by that.
I'm sorry, so this division, this department has code enforcement?
Yes. Code enforcement, building, planning, and business licenses. The, yeah, like I said, we did our best, we cut wherever we could to reduce the budget to help the home.
But we're not cutting any code enforcement officers, which you just said is we're adding.
Correct. We're getting one.
We're gaining one more, you just say?
Yes, we're in the process right now.
Okay, what is the total officer, the total that we have?
We have, in the field, we have six field officers. We have a supervisor and then the code enforcement official, George Grant. The supervisor and George do get out in the field, but not as much as the six officers who spend the majority of their day.
Thanks.
We need a lot of code enforcement.
I had proposed, I had another one in there, but we took it out.
We had to credit it.
Yeah, we had to credit it.
We, the council, especially to the council, it's got to recall, there was never a consideration of any code enforcement for revenue or any solid. On the other hand, it was to clean the city up for a lot of reasons. And I know there's a lot of letters that go to individuals and I know they weren't going to clean up one property in 11 months. It's cleared out. It's cleaned up. Down the street, you have to block, what isn't? And I was told that they received several letters from the city, that they were working with the city. We're hesitant to cite where they actually have to put court to get a fine. And I know that we've worked with them to try to get compliance, but how long do you work with the individual to try to get compliance?
Mr. Cox, that's a good point. We've actually been addressing that recently in the past few months, getting the officers to be a little bit quicker to a citation. Yeah. It, I mean, a lot, there's a lot going on too sometimes with the ownership of the property. Sometimes the ownership is changing and every time that changes, the process starts over. So that can derail our efforts, but we definitely are pushing the officers to be-
I've heard that before, that working, working, working changes to start again. Isn't there a method to file something on the property so that when it's a company that's at it, but notice the landlord says, hey, you have compliance issues and you have to comply, so if you don't, start over or we just have to continue?
It's all, it is, and we do that. The notice of tendency, the lien is on the property. However, when somebody comes in new and says, well, wait a minute, I didn't have anything to do with that, you don't want to just hit them right off the bat when they're showing signs of trying to make improvements. So it's a balancing of trying to work with them when you see that there's improvements being made and trying to hit them hard when there's not. It's that fine line of what's an improvement and how much, how much work are they doing? Are they really trying? So it is tough on the officers.
Well, there's two, two, two things that are amazing about that. The number of properties that have been cleaned up is amazing. The number of properties that need to be cleaned up is really amazing. I'm not sure what's going on. Nobody seems to want to clean up.
There's a lot of causes for it.
I have to tell you, I have so much new sympathy for code enforcement. I was gone on vacation for two weeks. Some neighbor complained that there was a beehive on my property and I think he must have called code enforcement and said, this guy's a council member, don't be giving him an easy ride. I've had four or five phone calls, one visit, and I got my, my pest control guy out. And I saw this Monday, I thought it was a beehive. There were no bees, but I figured, well, they're all sleeping. It was a bird's nest. It's a bird's nest. There are no bees. I've walked around my house. Now, code enforcement had to invest a paramount of time in this complaint and how could they give me an easy ride? They couldn't. They had to get in my face. It was, it was fine. It was a fine experience.
We felt the neighbor was just after you, said it wasn't a bee. How do you?
There wasn't a bee anywhere. I have a bee paradise in the front. We have, we have flowers and, you know, we want bees to pollinate. I don't want to get rid of bees.
The complaint that was a bee, that you had a, somebody-
The complaint that we had bees. Now, code enforcement spent a lot of time on this and it turns out to be-
That's not a violation, that's a amendment.
Down the street, three, three or four houses down on Burning Tree is a house that is so shabby with junk everywhere and weeds. And I wanted to call code enforcement and suggest they go talk to that owner.
Is that his house?
Not Jim Cox's house, no. So I mean, you guys, I don't know how you cope with all these different kind of problems. It's just, I take my hat off to you. I think you're doing a great job.
Code enforcement is a very, very difficult subject, Commander. I am a little bit encouraged, Gloria and I and Janelle actually were able to attend the What Works City Summit a week and a half or so ago. And one of the programs that I was able to attend actually is doing some test cases in the city of San Jose regarding code enforcement and sort of the initial contact, testing an AB, sort of a test, testing a more, I don't know, enforcement type of approach versus a kinder, friendlier approach to see just the initial outset, the first notice they get, which works better, which results in compliance more quickly. So that study's going to be done in about two months. I've actually offered Victorville to be a follow-up study if they want to tweak it or if they want to confirm any results they believe they have, perhaps over the summer. So all that's very premature, but we're trying to attack this code enforcement issue on the front end more so than the back end.
If I could raise an issue that's related to all departments regarding staff. We have heard, we have heard, council, we have added where we could through the rental inspection fee program last year, if you recall, over two years, within the last year, two years, added a couple additional code enforcement officer. We found a way to fund it and a program that would help the community and also pay for the employees. I just want to say across the board, so we don't spend time with each department dealing with this, as long as we know what your focus is and where you want us to prioritize, most of the departments are coming back to you in the next year to discuss out-of-date fees of different types across the board, as well as hopefully new programs as far as mechanisms to fund those programs and stuff that you want to do. It's just not going to happen by this budget, but the day after a budget is approved, we're going to go to work to get what we need. And what we need to do is if we're bringing expenditure down as much as we can at this point, and hopefully we'll come up with some new ways, we have to raise revenues. So, and we all know, that's upon us all. All department heads have raised the issue themselves and discussed it together, you know, in various groups. So there are, are plans, you know, they're thinking of it and trying to figure out creative ways to fund additional personnel or programs that are desired by the council, like code enforcement was through the rental inspection program, perhaps like the library can fund some staffing or something of that sort. I just want you to know, we're going to be working after this budget is done, immediately on trying to figure out new ways and programs to do revenues, but be prepared, a lot of those issues will come before you and all of us will come before you over the next year.
Go ahead, Sam and I argued again who was going to come first and he told me to go and he had a gun. 66% of life left there is public safety. I know Sam and I know that we're in the elephant in the room and I know that every percentage I ask for directly impacts the rest of the departments, who are my friends and the citizens. Why am I here? Since 2008, County Fire has had a contract with the local bureau and despite increasing needs for service, we've held off asking for any additional staffing, recognizing the fiscal constraints of the city. This year's budget does include one additional paramedic squad. Now, when I say paramedic squad, I'm only asking for the staffing. I'm making a promise that I can go out there and find equipment, the vehicle to staff it, but that would include six new full-time positions. Since 2008, the beginning of our contract, we ran about 12,800 calls. Last year, we broke 16,000, which is about 4,000 more calls per year. That's 25% increase is very significant considering there's only four fire stations that principally respond to calls within the city. In contrast, our contract costs have only gone up a total of about 5% aggregate. That was from the first year to last year. With this year's increase, even with this year's increase, I'm only asking for an increase of 9.9% since 2008 total. Actually, current needs indicate more than one squad. I spoke at length to the city manager about these needs and he asked me if I would only put one squad in this budget, recognizing the city's fiscal constraints. But the bottom would indicate that we actually need two squads, one in their downtown fire station and the second one, either fire station 312 or 313. The reason is, is that our fire stations are running well in excess of 3,300 calls. This is the busiest city in the county of San Bernardino with that call load. Nobody else is running that amount of calls. And about 3,300 calls, you no longer have time to do the fire prevention activities, the public education, and the training. We need to reduce the amount of calls per unit. Fire station 315 was also built just before the downturn. That will need to be staffed full-time at some point with additional costs. In addition, since 2008, we haven't asked the city to replace any of the fire service vehicles, even though the contract that we work under calls for the city to replace those. Out of compliance, out of NPA compliance, our three fire engines would be medic engine 312, 313, 314, with total value of about $1.5 million that may be replaced. Two trucks, medic truck 311 and 314, with about $1.5 million replacement value. Two chief officer vehicles, about $90,000. Two fire prevention vehicles, about $40,000. Two brush engines, about $800,000. One water tender, about $100,000. That's about $4.1 million in equipment that were really in arrears and really far behind our replacement schedule. About a combat that worked around the county and I begged Barren Steel, growth grants to get the equipment that we need. The grant engine that we presented to council meeting a couple of months ago is unbelievably needed in this city. In addition, I have another fire engine from Baker that's retiring out of the city. Baker, it's got a lot of freeway miles, but it's perfect for us coming to 314. The county's purchased three battalion chief vehicles and both fire prevention vehicles. And I have two brush engines on loan. I hate asking for additional manpower. The fact is, I can go out there and find the vehicles. The manpower is a little bit difficult. I do have the county of San Bernardino paying for three firefighter, paramedic positions at fire station 319. They work with the SCLA firefighter EMT and staff a squad when that firefighter EMT is available and there's no flights coming in. But that squad's only about 50% of the time. We do need to bring additional squads in. Is there any questions on this year's budget? I do have your budget summary. I will be honest, when I present a contract to the city, I don't see a summary myself. But there are some items on here in the budget that are important to us. Page 51 has fire SCBA equipment, $53,000. That's a grant that we folks approved about two months ago in a city council meeting. In the summary pages, there's three summary pages. I want you to look it up. One of the large costs to the city is the retire expense of $269,000. The good news is with the contract with the county of San Bernardino, you're not, you're no longer recording any of those current employees' retirement costs. So at some point, that's going to come off in the next few years.
What page is that on?
The budget summary, page 103 for fire.
Right after the time. For public safety.
What page? Yeah, that's the summary page. Chief, how many calls are, again, are you handling per year?
Over 16,000 calls with four stations.
And how many of those are fire calls? Four fires?
That's why, and that's a good question. About 20% of those are fire-related, 80% would be medical calls or calls for service, hazmat, different things. The reason I'm proposing a paramedic squad is it's a much cheaper unit to run than a fire engine. There's only two personnel, both firefighters, that is an ALS, and they have basic rescue equipment on that squad. That allows that squad to go to medical emergencies, keeping their fire engines available for fires. Now, one of the problems with the city of Victorville is the city just frankly- Now, one of the problems with the city of Victorville is the city, just frankly, it burns more than any other city in the county fire department. We often have second alarm fires, meaning we're stripping not only the city resources, but our neighboring resources to come to the city, and we'll often have back-to-back fires in the city. So, some point, it's very important for us to open fire station 315 to have some depth to the fire response, but what we need today is to take the medical calls and find a cheaper response model to handle those calls. That would be the ALS squad.
And do you have to roll all your trucks or always have to roll a truck when you do an EMT call?
We do right now until we have a paramedic squad. Fire station 319, when that squad's available, it responds in place of a fire engine. So, paramedic squad's literally a pickup truck, extended cab with basic rescue equipment and ALS and trans life support and medical gear. I would propose that we put an ALS squad at fire station 311, which is our busiest station, and that would run first out for any of the fire engine or the truck out of that station ran. So, it does two things. One is you're keeping your fire resources available for fire. The second is you keep the wear and tear of those equipment and extending vehicle life a little bit longer. We need to take the miles off.
Two questions. Where's fire station 315?
Next to Sunset Ridge Park.
And has there been, I'm sure there has been, but was there a study at Victorville if you put the paramedic units? Should that result in the savings? I realize you have to buy the equipment, but that's not, it's a thousand either for a truck. You have to have, what, two people on a paramedic unit?
Yes.
And that's not sending three people on the truck? And the savings of time, personnel, equipment over a long period of time? Is there any way to do a maintenance on that for actual cost?
There is, and I can model it out. Now, there's two things you need to look at. One is the amount of response and the second is having that fire equipment available to respond to fires. Right now, with four stations, they're adequately spaced, the equipment's there, it's available for the fires. As the golden triangle starts building out, fire station 315 is going to have to be staffed to meet the rooftops that are going to be built there. The medical calls is the second part of the equation and there really is, there really is three choices. One is we run a fire engine, it's very expensive. Two, we run a squad. The third opportunity is not available to us today and that's if the county fire had the ambulance contract, we would be able to respond, our public safety ambulances to those calls, meeting the requirements by law. Let's do that.
I recall some years ago, not exact, but five departments or cities that had ambulance paramedics continued to do so. Those that didn't, franchise ambulance and then some Jordan County agreement came in and that all went to the county. No income was ingeminated by ambulance services back to the city. Somewhere along the line, I was told that the city couldn't start an ambulance, but they really did. If they have a paramedic unit, it's because of the responsive, I don't know if the number is 50, 60% or whatever. I'm told that unless you have the ambulance service, you can't bill for it. But the same call the ambulance bills for. Why can't we have a paramedic unit or two and then bill?
Yes, sir. You can, you can institute EMS service fee and charge the cost of the paramedic's response. And I could bring that forward to the council if you'd like at some point. So, that would be like a $240 fee that we would bill to the insurances. Now, in answer to your question, there is both private and public ambulances. San Antonio County Fire is already the second largest ambulance provider behind AMR in the county. The county board supervisor ultimately controls the ambulance contract for the county. The ambulance contract has not gone to bid for many, many years. The, in a lot of our neighboring contracts, the cities get pass-throughs from the ambulance company or basically the fire responding to these calls, so that does not occur in this county. I think that that is on the horizon. I believe it is going in front of the board's budgets very soon to look at rebidding that county contract and making it more lucrative for the cities that we serve or looking at a county fire ambulance contract.
This county, this council struggles with having a high level of service, good service, to keep costs down. And we have to look at what of our options are out there and if it seems like an option that, obviously not tied to this budget, but in the very near future, maybe we'll look at some value, if it seems like there's potential.
Yeah, there's, Sam and I have talked a couple of times about the opportunity for some revenue recovery from the paramedic services that they provide. We can certainly bring that back to the council for consideration. Again, it wouldn't be in time necessarily for this budget, but certainly it could impact this budget sometime next fiscal year. It's not going to happen for all I want, I don't think, but it could happen by, say, the end of the first quarter, 16th of July.
Well, if the studies show that we need a paramedic unit and then we just continue giving the high level of service with no income, as a part of providing the paramedic service, I think we have to look at potential. I'm not suggesting the ambulance company is not doing the job. I'm not suggesting putting them out of business. I'm just looking at the potential in order to provide the highest level of service possible for the citizens of the city. I mean, it's something we have to look at.
I couldn't agree with you more, Mayor Protim Cox. I think that's something we ought to look at. We should probably have looked at a long time ago. I encourage the city man to bring that back. I think I go back to, you know, what you're requesting and listening to what Doug initially said, with the question of whether, given enough time, it would be balanced even with this expense that you're requesting. And I don't know that the city council has ever, you know, told our fire chief or at least the captain, no to a request. Quite frankly, when they need it, they come forward and they ask us and they know very well our budget situation, so.
I'd like to see that before Sam has even spoken.
Well, because I know Sam is not asking for all that.
He's got after the dog.
But no, I just, I know that that's traditionally been the case. I know Sam came to us in the last couple of years and said, you know what, this is enough. We need more deputies and I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here and sugarcoat this and tell you we don't. So, you know, that's when this council decided to fund it. We've never not funded public safety requests when they've come before us. So, I see no issue with this, especially in light of what you said in the beginning that, given enough time, this budget would be balanced even with this request. I think what we need to look at is some, you know, some of the things.
I think I quite said that.
Well, you got close, you got close. But what Mayor Protim Cox said, we need to look at additional revenue opportunities. I know we're looking at possibility of annexation with county fire, which would save us $6,900 or more here. So, those are some of the things that we've got to look at in the next, this whole year. But from my perspective, I'm fine with funding what they're requesting.
I just, I am just troubled by the possibility, and it strikes me as a very real possibility, 80% of our fire resources are committed to transporting people from home to hospital.
Yes, sir. Let's correct you real quick, sir.
Sure.
We're the initial, are we, have the responsibility of providing the paramedic service to our citizens. AMR does the transportation.
Okay.
AMR gets then bills for the transportation. Yet, you're right, when we're responding, we have that responsibility for providing the paramedic care, we're not reimbursed for it.
In my lifetime, I've gone to emergency room, I don't know, maybe three or four times. I got in my car, my wife got in my car and my wife drove me. I'm bothered by the fact that it's, I think it's an limitation for misuse and I don't know what to do about that. That sounds cold and heartless, but I still believe it. I just believe it.
And to combat that, we've been priority dispatching. Alpha calls will be very minor, likely to be referred to the doctor's office. Echo would be a true code three emergency to the hospital. So, we are prioritizing dispatching, but in order to truly use that priority dispatching, we need to have other delivery platforms besides the fire engine. And today, all we have is the fire engines.
Another model.
Chief, you know, from a policy perspective, of course, public safety is practically priority number one, I know for me, and I don't want to speak for the rest of the council, but I sure know that we take this very seriously. But what's going on here is while we're dealing with these budget issues is that the city doubled in size since 2000. And so, what I'm after more is right sizing our resources. So, for example, you mentioned 16,000 calls between four stations. I don't know if there's an average calls per station that is normal. I'm guessing we're over that, but as we continue to grow, I think, you know, there's opportunities here to sort of fix these issues every time. And so, I look forward to it every year, I'll be honest with you. We appreciate your candor, but we have, we need to really right-size our resources, which is what I'm looking forward to.
That is true, and I speak from experience. I really respect public safety and your services. I know in some cases, it's really necessary because I experienced that. When my husband was here, he fell and he backed me over by alone with him and there was no way possible that I could even lift him and get him back in the chair. So, my only resource was to call 911 and I think I did that by four different times in one month and response was always there. And I wasn't concerned with the expense, even though I did find out that you don't bill for your services. All I had to pay was for the ambulance, but I really feel very grateful and I hope that we can do something here. Thank you.
Does the city have the option to handle that billing function?
Probably, but it would be more efficient to have county fire handle it just because it's all their data. They have all that information. Dan and I have talked, like I said, a couple of times about it. We can certainly bring proposals forward. It's a little bit odd that all cities have elected to attempt to charge for what are essential services to the residents. We can certainly bring some options forward to at least get input on which way you want to look at possibly doing some kind of charge for that service.
And when somebody in Gloria's situation calls, you don't want to sit on the phone negotiating your fee for this.
No, it's all, it's absolutely.
You can't do that.
Typically, it's really the insurance company that ultimately gets the bill. I don't think these programs are successful when you attempt to bill every single person. It just doesn't, they don't work well.
Well, the insurance actually does bill the patient, you know, the insurance is still there. But in case of an emergency, you have to do what you have to do.
Right. I propose this year, you work in the budget of bigger clock.
So, Mayor Protim can say it.
It's a glare.
Oh, sorry. Good afternoon, council. No, we are not prepared to ask for any additional personnel this year, but you all know that I feel and you all would agree with me that we need more personnel. The police budget really is two parts. There's the Schedule A, which is the meat and potatoes of our budget, is the bill in which the sheriff sends to the city every year. Last year's Schedule A was $21.3 million. This year, the proposed Schedule A is listed at $21.7 million. Now, there's some explanation behind that. Last year, you were hit with a pretty significant increase due to liability insurance and workers' compensation. Those rates have actually decreased this year and because of that, the cost between Schedule As has remained relatively flat. However, we are right in the middle of contract negotiations. The police union is in negotiations with the county for a three-year contract and the police union has asked for a 4% increase for the next three years through 2018, 4% each year. It went to arbitration, which was non-binding. The arbitrator has published a finding that they feel a 3%, 3% increase is more appropriate. The county, on the other hand, has offered a 2%, 2% and 3% increase. So, until that negotiation process is complete, we won't have a final Schedule A for you. And the smaller city budget that we manage has remained relatively flat. There was a $1,700 increase for travel and meetings and a $15,000 increase proposed for vehicle repair, and this was based on the number of cars we wrecked in the city last year. And we're projecting that we're hopefully going to do less, but we're projecting based on that. Other than that, I have bugged Doug about some support personnel, but given the light of this year's budget, we're not asking for any increase in staff at this time.
Sam, what have you been able to do with volunteers?
Well, the volunteers that we get the most bang for our buck out of are the reserve deputies. And over the years, that number has significantly decreased and the reason is because post California peace officer standards of training changed the requirements for someone to be a Level One Reserve Deputy. In essence, they require a Level One Reserve Deputy to undergo the same exact training as a regular deputy. Therefore, they have to go through a complete academy in order to become a reserve. Now, why would anybody put themselves through that and not become a full-time regular deputy? So, we have, we have five reserve deputy volunteers that really do supplement us quite a bit, but there's just, there's just not much help from five people. The other volunteer units that we have are COPs, our citizens on patrol, and they save us an inordinate amount of hours driving up and down the hill, running cars to get washed, to get serviced, the transport of paperwork and the equipment supplies up and down the hill between headquarters and the station. They're a huge, a huge benefit for the station and we have 35 of them right now. We've got quite a few. Only about 2% of them though really put in the hours and give us the hand, but they're invaluable. The other volunteer group that we have is the Explorer Program and that doesn't provide much as far as, as far as operations.
You're providing more to them than their class.
Correct, correct. That program is really a homegrown program, developing the kids and getting them interested in a law enforcement career and homegrowing our own.
Doesn't work?
Yes, absolutely. About 50% of our explorers become deputy chairs.
Wow.
Any questions for me?
Well, our budget number's up about a million and a half, almost a million and a half. If we're not adding personnel, where is that going mostly?
It's, it went from 21.3 last year to 21.7.
I'm looking at our police budget here, which is 23.8.
I still think that's a working, working budget.
Does that include the number before the rebate that comes back for the positions not filled?
That is the number before that rebate, correct? That's just the straight Schedule A number and I just want to underscore again that that is showing no increase in personnel from last year, but we still don't know what the salaries and benefits negotiations is going to yield. I suspect you'll see a good 3% to 4% increase this year based on that.
Doug, how are we going to deal with that? I mean, we've got to assume that that's going to happen, so.
We took the 2%, we took the 2%, at the time of preparation, I believe we took the 2% that we had at that time. Since then, there's been discussion. So, if it's 1%, it won't be asked, think, boom, we'll have to figure it out. If it's 4%, it'll be more, but we'll have to, you know.
But you've included that in your number?
We've included everything plus the 2%.
Okay.
So, we don't, we're only missing 1% to 2% of the addition.
Sam, just out of curiosity, is there an executive level in the department where they're not members of the union?
Yes.
What is that level?
The rank of captain and above.
So, lieutenants are captains.
Yeah.
Is that an incentive not to become a captain?
Yes, sometimes.
Or it's one of many reasons not to become a captain.
This will stop ringing, there's no overtime, let me tell you.
Well, Sam, I would like to say the same thing that I told the fire chief is that when you look at a city of our size, when you hit that 100,000 population, I was interested in other cities and what they had and I found that larger cities like Chicago, Houston, and Chicago, LA- like Chicago, Houston, and Chicag-- LA have anywhere between a hundred and sixty and four hundred police per hundred thousand people. Now, I'm not saying we have those same type of issues that they do, but on the other hand, I looked at Fontana, and they've got about ninety per hundred thousand, so I believe we're at seventy.
We're at seventy, correct.
And so certainly, we are looking to fix our levels, whether it be fire or police, but when other folks come up and participate, there's a lot of leadership out there, and we were just blessed to have that new fire engine provided through grants and other revenues. It somewhat alleviates the pressure here, but we're certainly mindful of getting after different ways to address these issues before they get, before we keep growing, and we know we're going to keep growing. So in ten years, it'll just be that much more of an issue. So anyway, I just wanted to tell you that we support you and appreciate everything you're doing.
We know you do.
I've got my back turned to the rest of the--
That's also important for everybody to understand, that growth means more residents, but it means more homes, it means more disposable income. That generates the sales tax and the property tax that is our funding source for police and fire. So there's a, there's a linkage to that growth. There's a certain amount of that revenue that comes naturally. The better quality, the development, the better quality, you know, the better revenues we're going to generate, but that's still a function of our marketplace. It is what it is, so.
Put it in somewhat of a perspective, I know Dan told you how many calls for service they handle each year. We handle about a hundred and forty thousand calls for service each year, and we draw roughly fifteen and a half thousand reports based on those calls. And last year, we put more than five thousand people in jail, so it's-- Victor's Island is a unique place. He said it was the most busy station in the County Fire District. It is also the most busy station in the County Sheriff's Department as well, and I, it always has been.
Always has been.
Always has been.
Even when it was a twenty thousand person--
Even when Deputy Lindsey Savage and Deputy Sam Lucchino were working patrol, yes.
Really?
It has to do with the commercial corridor. You have a commercial corridor in the middle of your city. You get a higher daytime population, you get a higher opportunity for theft or other crimes to occur.
That makes a lot of sense because we're right in the middle of everything, so.
Now, there are other areas, other cities in the county that perhaps are busier or may have busier areas, but they have their own police department. San Bernardino, Fontana, or is Fontana County Sheriff?
Fontana has a city--
The city, oh, police department as well. Ontario has their own police department as well, so. East Stockton County Sheriff's Station, I don't know if any of those other cities perhaps would be, I don't know if you'd call it better or worse, more active.
Speaking for myself, and I imagine everybody on this council probably agrees with this, I think our ranking with the sheriff is so superior to having your own police department. I'm just glad to have you, I hope you're glad to be here.
On behalf of Sheriff John McMahon, thank you.
Is that dog dying for its own service?
Yeah, he's working on it. He's still a little boy looking for it. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Public Works Department, I'm going to have you in that speaking, too, very generally. The department involves engineering, public works, which themselves are clearly self-explanatory, and also divisions of municipal utilities rolled up in that is your electric services and your gas services, electric, CLA and Foxborough. And the water is self-explanatory, but also rolled up into that budget is your industrial wastewater treatment operations. Like many of the other departments, this department has increased its dependency on special and enterprise revenue sources, or reducing its dependency on general funds. We do see probably the most dramatic of increases in, on the engineering side, and that's largely attributed to capital improvements, particularly roads and sewer improvements. So with that, I'm going to let Doug start on the public works side, and then we'll finish with Brian on the engineering side.
Excuse me, we do have twenty minutes before our session.
That's great.
And before you start, if we have a substantial increase in engineering costs because of the capital, for example, for sewer, then sewer pays back engineering, and water pays back engineering, so.
Yeah, those costs are paid directly from those funds as well--
And on their budgets.
--as well as development impact fees in Measure I, paying for the road improvements that are happening.
Just quickly, Doug, before you start, where is sewer and wastewater treatment? They're all part of this budget, right?
Yes.
Where are they?
We'll cover them all. They are in the public works.
Oh, of course.
Yes, sir. So you did say at least exciting or most exciting, right?
Yes. Oh, yeah. We're building stuff. It's always good.
Doug Matthews, Director of Public Works of Water, we're going to go over wastewater, water, public works, and after that, I'm not sure if you can help either, it's Keith there, you know, you can answer those questions and speak on that as well. I'll keep a high-level overview because there's not really a lot of change going on. Starting with the wastewater side, which is our treatment plant, our revenues do exceed expenditures, and that includes one point one five million in capital improvements. No new internal positions, we operate this with one point five FTEs, and on the contract operations, no increase, we operate that with four FTEs. I know Brian Gable is here, and if you have questions afterwards, or now on the operational side of it, he's here to answer any of those. Jumping to the water side, we essentially have been through the water rate study, and we've gone through this pretty extensively. We follow that budget pretty much right to a T. We budgeted conservatively in the revenues, though, so you are going to see that the revenue numbers we show on water won't match that study because we kept it high, not accounting for conservation. If those don't come in, then expenses will be less as well, so you'll see the same drop in revenues and expenses going on. So we just didn't want to come back to the council aspect on it later. So it will not match in that regard. Other than that, most every other aspect of the water rate study is reflected in the Jumping to public works, and for those not familiar, the divisions in there are asphalt, concrete, sewer, storm drain, weed abatement, the treaty, VMS, flood shelters, transit, street sweeping, open spaces, development, CNG stations, fleet, and shore maintenance. All these divisions are relatively flat, except for you're going to see a rise in sewer due to personnel, and on capital purchases due to air quality requirements of replacing a lot of our equipment. On the personnel side, we've had a sewer audit by the state, and they want us to be more proactive, less reactive, so in essence, on that side, we have three new field positions and one new office position to satisfy their requests. As well as a million dollars in CCTV for our pipelines, they want a snapshot of our entire system within two years. We don't certainly have the staff to do that, so that'd be contracted on some end. You'll see some funds dipping into capital reserves, and again, that has equipment, that's stuff we really don't have a choice on replacing. They're going to be timed out for air quality purposes, and we just have to replace it, or sometimes like a tank expires on a CNG, something of that nature. One new asphalt field position is the only other position we're adding in there on top of sewer, just our road conditions, the amount of cracks, the potholes just keeps increasing. I'll keep it that short. If you have any questions.
Anyone? I'm just going to ask.
Probably someone get up and ask the city attorney something. I know that the council wants to have some discussion and input. One thing to consider is we should continue the remainder of this meeting when we get to five o'clock or just before to after the regular council meeting, we could reconvene over here. I think we probably have less than a half an hour to go as of right now, depending on questions and comments. I don't think we're going to finish by five o'clock unless we really bust through.
Well, I do have a question. I was going to ask. The capital, engineering, what up, capital, what up, engineer, the capital, what up? Somebody's paying that.
Yeah.
That has to show somebody.
Those are the special, like I said, the manterize as well as any traffic mitigation.
I know we do, too. Because if we go back to, you know, if we go back to engineering, for example, when the vice budget was eighteen, it's twenty-four, it's thirty-seven percent, you go back to actual, two fifteen, ten million, two and a half times. Somewhere, I know, I know in the water, for example, we found out in January, that the capital and water budget for South, we didn't get to, the higher the budget was going to get to that, that the budget reflected six or seven million in the budget that we didn't spend. And so I like to see the budget figure, but I like to see the actual figure. We will adopt this, and the actual figure might or might not type two fifteen, but it's two sixteen, but we don't know that for the summer.
Part of that is, is again, is the free budget under the tab, a few tabs back under capital improvement, is a list of the projects, and the projects are listed by fund.
Yes.
And however, in this, they're not necessarily tied at this point to the department.
Right.
And what we can do is add that to the matrix on this and hand it out or include it in the budget, so you have exactly what the project is, by what department, and under the plan. Now, notice that they, they cross over, just like we said, the plan is not, and we cross over, the departments cross over. So you've got different departments working with different departments, so we can cross-reference the matrix.
I didn't want to get into it now because I'm trying to get to it, but it's something that--
Since Brian is right here, Brian, can you tell us in the engineering budget, how much is general fund allocated?
It's about three percent of the budget, it's a very small slide. So, you know, all these increases you see are, they're all the restricted funds.
The general fund is only, this is better working counter and development projects based on--
Yeah.
And that's everyone who's working on freeways, traffic, and out in the field and doing construction projects is working under restricted funds.
I don't know where Doug went, I've got a question. I'm looking at page twenty-six and twenty-seven, which is sanitary fund and solid waste. Sanitary is the sewer system and wastewater treatment?
Sanitary--
And sewage, these--
Just the collection system.
Just the collection system.
Right.
But, but does that represent what we're paying to BBWRA for? That's included in sanitary fund?
Yes, it includes that.
Okay. It looks like we've got revenues of eleven, five, and expenses before capital of about twelve, nine. Our revenues aren't covering our expenses.
And absolutely, as you recall, you approved a sewer rate study.
That's why we're doing sewer rate study. On solid waste, it's a little worse. Revenues of thirteen, two, costs, no capital, of fourteen, nine.
And actually, we're going to piggyback on the sanitary sewer--
We're going to take a look at those because--
Look at that this year.
You know, when we're having to support these losses, I mean, we're not taking police funds and using these, I realize that, but--
These enterprise funds has reserves set aside to cover these expenses, but it obviously is telling us we can take--
Where's wastewater treatment? Where's that plant in all this?
Well, it's actually rolled up, you won't see it separated in this budget today because it's rolled up in the other private funds.
Seems to me it's an important bit of information. I'd sure like to see it in some form or another. What we're generating revenues, what it costs us to operate that plant, because I keep believing we're doing fine.
And we are.
And I believe you, I just would really like to see the numbers.
Yes. It appears that the expenses are less.
You said, because we told you several areas where we're not doing fine, so not I did anything. If we stay with you in fine, we're pretty sure.
And I trust you. I do.
I know.
That study's going to look at our sewer collections, treatment plant, BBWRA, reclaimed water, and the coal connection people we'll be looking at as well, so.
It's going to be real important because we're making everybody at BBWRA very angry at us right now.
Yeah, we're going to get it done for sure.
Mayor Garcia, if I might, since you're running out of time, we should probably adjourn this meeting to the six o'clock timeframe, assuming we can't get through, and then you still have public comments, so it may be advisable right now to call for public comments so that we give that public an opportunity if there is any--
Public comments at this time.
Right now, and then you'd need a motion to adjourn to the six o'clock with the understanding that you'll handle it after the other six o'clock agenda items.
Very well.
If you want to. We still have a follow-up meeting to this, do you may not have scheduled?
The intent would be to bring the budget back again in two weeks if necessary, ultimately we're looking for adoption. And I think the second meeting is due, and just because of--
I still think we need a second meeting, because it's already scheduled, so.
Okay, can we have public comments, adjourn the meeting, we continue?
Assuming, if you, yeah, if you want to adjourn, unless you want to just delay it until the next meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
But I would recommend a public comment right now, just to--
It's the council's discretion if you want to just kind of put everything on hold for two weeks, or if you want to come back at the end, or that's a decision you could make after we get done with the regular items of the six o'clock meeting, to see if they're--
No, we'd have to make the notice of adjournment before the conclusion of this meeting.
Right, but they could adjourn to the six o'clock--
Exactly.
--the termination of the six o'clock meeting, and then at that time decide--
They could decide if they want to--
Adjourn--
That is correct.
Okay, at this time, we will have public comments. Is there anyone? I don't have any cards. Anyone that wants to speak?
So just to clear it up, I would recommend that you adjourn to the end of the six o'clock regular council meeting, and then you can decide at that time if you have the energy and interest in continuing this discussion now or waiting two weeks. I know for staff, it would be good to get the input now, it gives us two weeks to work, but that will be at the council's discretion at the end of--
It'll depend on how quickly you can get us through the agenda.
I don't control that.
Technically, the motion should be to actually adjourn to the six PM meeting--
Yes.
--and then it'll follow at the end of the, of the business.
Exactly. All right.
This meeting will continue after our six o'clock meeting, and at that time, we will decide whether it is to be continued with two weeks.
They're good job. Good job.